Well, that was loud. Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe in students like the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda two, public input. Mrs. Congdon, come on up. I'm gonna get you a seat right up here next meeting, I think.
Jill Congdon, 298 High Street, speaking on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA. This Thursday, we have the Time to Shine auditions through the Southbridge Elementary Arts Initiative, and the auditions will begin this Thursday, April 25th, at 3:30 at the auditorium of the old Southbridge High School. We are still looking for two volunteers to help when children come in to give them numbers for their placement in the auditions, and that should last handing out the numbers for about forty-five minutes. So if anyone wants to volunteer for this, we need two volunteers for about forty-five minutes, starting at 3:30, and they can contact artswithahart@charter.net or call 508-909-6021 to help us handing out audition numbers. And you can contact Julie at either the email or the phone number. We have, I'm happy to say that we have over seventy kids who will be auditioning for this talent show, ranging from preschool to grade five. There's gymnastic numbers, singing numbers, dancing numbers. Everyone who auditions will be able to be part of the show in some aspect. Some of the kids will either be able to be part of the opening act or the closing act if their skit doesn't make it. Some of the skits might even be able to be combined. So every child that's trying out for this will actually be able to make it. So it's really going to be a fun and great event. The talent show will take place Friday, May 17th, at 7:00 PM at the old high school on 25 Cole Ave at 7:00 PM. So it's really going to be a fun event. So tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for children twelve and under. Our next event is the Sixth Annual Father Daughter Dance, A King and His Princess, which is going to be held this Friday, April 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Charlton Street School and the gym. Pictures will start at 5:00. Professional photos by Village Photo, packages starting at $10. And this event is for girls pre-K to grade five to enjoy with their father, grandfather, uncle, or other special adult male in their lives. And this event is really going to be a fun time. The kids are already talking about it. I've had a lot of phone calls on the PTA track phone from mothers saying that their children are really excited to go with that special adult male in their lives. Snack packs and waters and cookies will be available for sale. Tickets are sold at the door. It's $5 per person, and the doors for the dance will open at 6:00 and pictures will start at 5:00. So we're excited about this event. Should be a really fun time. Our next PTA meeting will be next Wednesday at 7:00 in room 200 of the old high school. At this meeting, we will be voting on officers for next year's PTA board. As of now, we have one nomination for the officers for next year, so we're still taking nominations for next year's PTA board. So we're hoping that people step up to be involved in next year's PTA, and that's next Wednesday night at 7:00, Old Southbridge High School. We're also still collecting box tops, labels for education and coke rewards, and we'll be collecting them until the second to last week of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public this evening? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll have the meeting called to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Max?
Dr. Domingo.
Excused.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lozo.
Excused.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Absent.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Four present, two excused, one absent.
Thank you. Moving on, we have approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting, April 9th, 2013. Do you have a motion?
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any errors, corrections? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page three, Agenda Item 13, two, three, four, five, six, seventh paragraph, and I'm sorry, Max, that I didn't contact you about this sooner. Mrs. McLaughlin described recently attending a meeting with the MASC for Level IV School Districts. It wasn't for Level IV School Districts, and I may have misspoken at the meeting. It was District Four, which is central Massachusetts. So it wasn't specifically for Level IV districts. It was for all schools in central Mass. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing I'd like to maybe recommend is on page one, Agenda Item Number Four for the roll call. I know we like to put our names in alphabetical order, so perhaps mine should be switched with Dr. Domingo's.
So one time, Jill.
Okay, one time, Jill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Minutes pass. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Chairwoman's Announcements. This evening, I just have two. I put before all the members tonight. We have an addendum change later on in the meeting, so we'll be adding that. And then also, I have the last company that I contacted for the superintendent search, NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council. So I gave everyone a copy of their response, so then now we can start moving forward. I'll try to have these people perhaps come to a meeting in May, so the public can hear them, and then hopefully we can choose a company before June, and we can get started for the first of the new school year to get going on this. Okay, so next, Reports, Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Macharia. Hey, Faith.
Hello, everyone. First, I'll start by announcing Girls' Softball won against Bartlett yesterday, 11 to 6, which was really great. Second, the National Junior Honor Society is collecting canned and boxed food for the Southbridge Food Pantry. If you can encourage your kids to bring in food, that would be really great. Third, I would love to thank Mr. Davis and all who approved the girls' and boys' tennis uniforms. They came in, and we actually got them today, and they look really great, so thank you for that. Today was also the annual science fair for the Southbridge High School kids. It went really great. We had, in first place, Casey Mitchell and Catherine Frichette, who did an experiment on social psychology. In second place was Kelsey Aponte, who did an experiment on death rays. And Cassie St. Germain and Felicia Brunel were in third place with an experiment on cheating. On the inventory, the winners were first place Brandon Hyman and Jordan Torres, who created this all-in-one movie box. It was really awesome. In second place was Cheyenne Grania and Amber Peck, who created Taste the Juicy Contradiction. In third place was Orlando Quesada and Mark Butler, who made this easy belt. So tomorrow, these students with fifteen others will be competing against the SuiKo students from other schools. They'll be coming out of our high school from 5:30 to 8:00, and all of you are invited to come watch and support all the kids. The winner will actually be winning, I think it's a $200 prize, so come, all of members of the community are welcomed. Upcoming events, we have the band, who will be having a concert on May 16th, and the chorus will be having a concert on May 22nd, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. Moving on to the next agenda, it's School Committee Reports. A, Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I do have a report to give. It's very important. We had a meeting last evening, and there's a lot of wonderful information that came out of it, so I would like to ask maybe just a couple extra minutes longer than our normal report, because I do think it was a fantastic meeting. Last night, April 22nd, we met at 7:00 PM at the room M100 in 25 Cole Ave. Present were myself and member Dr. O'Leary. Absent member was Dr. Domingo. Also in attendance was our alternate member, Mrs. McLaughlin. We were also joined by our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Mrs. Amy Allen, as well as citizen members Wally McKenzie and Erin Quinney. I called the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. The first Agenda Item that we discussed was curriculum review, specifically at the high school, and Mrs. Allen was telling us that things are changing at the high school. And again, what I'm about to talk about is specifically a draft. It's a work in progress. It's not etched in stone in any way, however, we are making huge strides with our curriculum, and we're targeting the high school as our first point. Some of you may be aware, we talk a lot about Common Core, but now there's something else called Mass Core, and Mass Core is a new state requirement that tells us what you need to graduate, and it's something that we will be implementing if all this gets approved, starting with our freshman class. And under Mass Core, there still will be Mass Core, I mean, Common Core framework standards within each type of subject area. However, this Mass Core is a new requirement, and again, it's what you need to graduate. We talk a lot about accountability, and this is what you need to graduate, and if you do not fulfill these requirements, well, then we have a problem. One of the biggest things is prior years for graduation was built on number of credits and how many years you took of a specific subject area. Now we're moving to units. Basically, it means the same, but instead of years, it's now considered units. For our English Language Arts, you will be required to take four units of English Language Arts. As a freshman, you'll have to take English I, and as a sophomore, English II. What's wonderful after that is we are introducing a ton of electives in the ELA department, such as poetry, short essay, mythology, fairy tales, and one important thing, public speaking and debate. One of the greatest things that came out of one of our subcommittee meetings was the debate, perhaps performing or creating a debate team, so we're very happy to see that. It's no surprise to us that our MCAS scores in math are not so great, so prior requirements for math for graduation was three years of math. Now that's changing to four units. So in math, you need to take Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and then an elective. That elective can be pre-calculus, trigonometry, functions and statistics, a business math, perhaps an SAT prep in math, money and banking, or financial literacy. What's exciting is if that we have some of our eighth-grade students who will become eligible to take Algebra I as an eighth grader. So if you're doing really, really well in math, say in seventh grade, we now can target those seventh graders and give them Algebra I as eighth graders, so that as they enter the high school, they can perhaps start their freshman year at an even higher level in math. As far as science, we have three units of a lab science. If you're a freshman, you'll take physical science, and as a sophomore, you'll take biology. However, again, if you are a really good student in math at the middle school level, when you are, if you're doing well in eighth grade, you can take an honors biology class as a freshman. So you need to take, like I said, your three units. Now, as far as electives in science, for lab science, we'll be offering Chemistry, Chemistry I and AP Chemistry. There'll be a physics class that we're looking to bring back to the curriculum, Anatomy and Physiology, also a new class for Technology and Engineering, and also introducing some half semester classes in Forensic Science, Micro and Marine Biology, Electronics, Manufacturing and Design. So this is very, very exciting. One of the greatest things with the curriculum nationwide, actually, is working towards an acronym called STEM, and it's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. We're looking to even take it a step forward to STEAM, so it would be Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. So in light of that, for the arts, we're looking to bring our music department back to where it once was with the introduction of concert choirs and chamber select choirs, music history, the jazz band, pop music writing, music fundamentals, piano, guitar. Foreign language, that's something that we really don't hear too much about at the middle school level. However, for graduation, you need to take two units of a foreign language in the same language. Right now, we currently offer French and Spanish, and there is an AP class for Spanish. Ideally, we'd like to maybe perhaps add one more, say Mandarin, to that list of foreign languages. That is not set in stone, however, but again, if you want to graduate, you need to have two units of a foreign language at the high school. In addition to that, we also have a wonderful selection of business and technology electives that our kids will be able to choose from, computer applications, the school bank, graphic design, digital photography, yearbook production, broadcast journalism, print journalism, which would probably primarily revolve around our school newspaper, digital technology applications, commercial publications, web design and production. We have the new school now, we have the facilities, we have the equipment, so now we want to really use what we have. We're grateful for what we have, to tie that into the curriculum. Our goal is to make our education curriculum better for the kids that are here. We want our kids to stay. So this is just one small piece of the puzzle, however, it is, I thought it was just wonderful to know that, you know, so much work has been done to revamp that whole entire course of study at our high school, and I'm excited, and I hope that our district leader team can continue to move forward with that. And again, I thank Ms. Allen tremendously for taking the time to really bring us up to date with that last evening. Our second Agenda Item was our proposed restructuring district-wide on the administration level, and again, relative to the high school. In order to make this curriculum stuff work, we have to make sure we have the right people in place. So what we're proposing to do, again, draft, not etched in stone, we're looking to create a system where there's a principal, grade six through 12, at the new school. However, equal in rank to that principal will be a Director of Education on the high school side for grades nine through 12, as well as a Director on the middle school side for grade six through eight. These people are going to be the ones who will actually help the teachers teach their subjects. They will be inside those classrooms, inside those buildings, teaching or helping the teachers teach what it is they need to do. They are considered directors because they will be focusing on methodology of teaching, the pedagogy of teaching, instructional content. We currently have a Director of Curriculum with a Director of Math, ELA, and ELL, which are great, and we need those people, but this takes it one step further. So we're excited about that. Underneath that principal, like I said, we'll have the principal, and then in line with that principal will be a Director of Education on both the middle school side and the high school side. Under the principal, we will have, or proposing to have, two assistant principals, one for grades six through eight, the other for grades nine through 12. And in addition to that, an academic dean for grade six through 12. And that academic dean, again, would be in the classrooms, which is key. We need that person in the classrooms, helping our teachers, being in charge of our teams, attending our district, our department meetings, and keeping track of data. We all know that we're a data-driven culture, and the academic dean can assist the principal and the Directors of Education at that high school level with that endeavor. Moving over to the middle school side, we're looking to create teams now at the middle school, where there will be two sets of teams per grade, and there will be an honors class and a standardized class with each one of those teams, and it'll allow our ELL students and our SPED students to be better spread out amongst the regular population. So we're very, very much looking forward to that. The goal of this whole team concept is to bring in co-curricular activities whereby you will have your ELA teacher, your math teacher, your science teacher, your social studies teacher, as well as a SPED education teacher running your team. Each team will have a team leader, and those teachers will now be able to create their curriculum or what it is they want to teach together. If they want to take the kids outside and combine a science and a math together, they'll be able to do that. There will be flexible scheduling, rather than going to seven classes in a row, forty minutes, forty minutes, forty minutes, each with a different teacher. Now, if they want to spend half the day, again, outside doing math and science together as a team, they'll be able to do that. There will be a huge amount of flexibility that will allow that to happen. Also, both at the middle school and high school level, those Directors of Education that I mentioned earlier, they will also be looking at middle school and high school guidance offices. Because these Directors of Education are very, the leaders will say, in methodology and pedagogy and instructional content, they're the ones that will be making sure that those kids are in the classes that they should be in, making sure that the scheduling is correct, so everything can fall in line with what a child wants to do or the class that that child should be in to make that actual happen. Over on the side of the elementary schools, there will also be a Director of Education at the elementary level, again, that will be in even par with the principals of our elementary schools, though that Director of Education will again oversee the guidance department at each one of our schools, and we're also going to be having a little bit of reallocation, but we will have an instructional data coach at West Street School, as well as Charlton Street School, and as well as Eastford Road School. And what is wonderful about this proposed structure is this will come at no cost to the district. It is purely a reallocation of resources. So this is new, it's exciting, it's something that needed to be done, and I'm very proud to be a part of it, and again, we need to help our teachers, we need to do a better job of making kids realize it's important to be in school, and making sure ultimately that the person in charge, accountability, best practices, communication is there, and I feel that this structure best will exemplify that. And then finally, we talked about a new mentoring program that our Retired Teachers Association would like to bring on board, and they will be paid via the Title I Carryover Grant, and basically what they will do, or what they are seeking to do, is to work in small groups, maybe three to four children per group, or kids who are at risk, and help them along, give them the life skills that they need, the social skills that they need, perhaps take them out of the buildings, and help them with whatever the needs they have, what they may need. If they need tutoring or mentoring, provide that service as well. It's something that we feel we need to target those middle school kids, because we don't want to lose them. If they're having trouble with life or social skills or academic skills, we want to give them the foundation, the assistance that they need at that level, so that they don't get to be a sophomore or a junior and realize that they feel like they don't have a place or that nobody cares for them, and they just decide that they want to quit school. So this, again, is wonderful, exciting news for our kids. The fact that we have all these wonderful retired teachers wanting to give back is just a phenomenal thing, and I personally thank them. So that being said, the last thing we talked about was our ELL department. I have not talked to our ELL director, Sarah Jordan, but that's something that we want to look at next, about how our ELL program and curriculum fits into these new requirements at the high school level. So I do not have a date yet, but I will be posting another subcommittee in the near future for curriculum, and that will be on our agenda to discuss the ELL piece and all of this. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Next, Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last meeting was on April 10th. It was called to order at 9:07 AM. Present was myself, school committee members Lauren McLaughlin and Cara Donovan, and citizens Leeann Payton, Erin Quinney. We approved Subcommittee Minutes from March 27th, 2013. One of the things that we worked on was the Policy Manual Update and Check Forms List, and I have to thank Lauren McLaughlin, because she basically did all the work on this and then brought it to the Subcommittee. The Policy Manual Update is a form which will be used to communicate policy changes to the district leadership team, and obviously principals will then convey those policies to the staff. What we noticed, we created this form because we were finding out that a new policy or a revised policy that the Subcommittee worked on was not getting communicated to the proper people. So this will more or less be an internal document, I'm sorry, not, this will be given out by Central Office. Our superintendent has looked at the document and agrees to it, so now everybody will be informed. The other thing we worked on, Lauren presented to us, was a checklist. That's the internal document that we will be using to make sure we keep track of the policies that we review when they're adopted, and obviously the first, second, and third readings, and those are in the packets tonight. We talked about our online policy manual, which is somewhat difficult, not difficult, but cumbersome to access, because if you go on the school committee website and go to the policy manual, you choose, let's say, the index for Section A, so that comes up. And then some of the policies are broken down, you know, A, C through AZ, or whatever. When you look at a particular policy, you have to go through all the policies in that particular section to find out what you're looking for, which, like I said before, makes it somewhat cumbersome. Citizen member Erin Quinney did a compilation of individual PDF files that will make it much easier to access our policies online, but that probably won't take place till sometime this summer, when the Central Office staff has the time, because it is time-consuming to set this up. So that'll probably take place sometime during the summer and be ready for the school year, so the policy manual will be easy to access. We also worked on the community use of school facilities, the policy and the regulation. There were very minor changes. I can talk about that later on when we vote for the first reading. And that's basically it for that meeting. Our next meeting is tomorrow. It is at 9:00, 25 Cole Ave, room M100. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Principay. Next, we have Budget Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee. That's Dr. Domingo's Subcommittee. She's not here this evening. I believe that we probably will be calling budget meetings after the approval or disapproval of the town to our budget we'll be presenting next week. Next, we have Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. At our last school committee meeting, I had mentioned that we would most likely be resuming negotiations with the Southbridge Education Association on May 8th. That date is not good for a number of people, and I'm waiting to hear if we, in fact, can have it the following week, on the 15th of May, but I haven't received that confirmation from the SEA yet, so I will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Communication, Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no new information to report. We just had a meeting a couple weeks ago. I will need to schedule another meeting, but haven't done that yet.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. There are no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to Agenda 10, which is reported to the Superintendent. Mr. Nebuchadnezzar?
Thank you. First, I want to compliment this Donovan next to me for making a great summary of the presentation that was done by Amy last night, and it really is exciting, because we looked at all aspects of the curriculum, and we're in the process of putting together a new course of study, program of studies, excuse me, that will be distributing to all the students in the community. It'll lay out the chart in a more simplified form. Here are the required courses, then will be the electives. We looked at the units. Before, you had five for each course. For a year-long course, you need 122 or so credits to graduate. We're following the Mass Core program. A year-long course is now one unit, a semester course is a half unit, and we may offer some quarter courses, and so on, and then you need 22 units to graduate. So we're simplifying all of that, following the state's standards and so on, and then providing the documents for the students and the guidance and the parents, so they can make better choices for their kid regarding the courses that they have. So that'll be coming up. So, that'll be coming out in a couple of weeks, and we're working with the guidance department, so we can have schedules, preliminary schedules in hand when the student leaves in June. That's the goal. And when I say preliminary schedules, it won't be period by period, teacher by teacher, it'll be the courses that the student has signed up for, and the electives, and that'll be, and then, obviously, in the summertime, there's always movements back and forth, so then councils will be able to make adjustments in August. So, that's, we're excited about that, but that's been one of my primary objectives, is that having that organized and mostly completed in June will allow us a summer to make adjustments, and then when school opens up, it'll be orderly, chaos-free, child-centered, and the student will know where they're going. So, that's the thing. I've always said that if the school opens in an organized, orderly fashion, the likelihood of that staying that way increases. If it opens in disorderly, disorganized, it takes a long time to straighten out. So, that's one of the, that's the number-one expectation for the school. And obviously, the budget is going to reflect all of those plans that we're talking about, and that $25 million is the major portion to allow us to accomplish, hire some additional teachers for the teaming for the middle school. We've worked really hard to redirect our existing resources. We're not asking for a great deal more, but we have to dramatically restructure how we go about doing business in the Southbridge Public Schools, because what you've been doing hasn't been working, and you can't continue doing that and asking for additional sums and hope it improves. So, there is going to be large changes, and with that comes the expected complaining and moaning, because change is hard for people. I always said, you know, the only people that really like change are babies. Everyone else resists it. So, but the one thing we've done is we've made sure we communicated with everybody. Nothing is being done in the back room with a couple of people, making decisions, and then inflicting them on the community. We've gone out and talked to them, and many people have said to me, they see the superintendent out in the buildings more than they've ever seen before, because I like to see things with my own eyes, in order to be able to make decisions, and also better able to defend the decisions I'm making, because when I see it happening, and so on. And then, plus, I get a lot of information. Parents stop me all the time. This morning, I met with the two lovely ladies with the audition for the arts, and they sucked me into coming on Thursday at 3:30. I was going to volunteer to take that, but I figured that's enough, you know? Almost raised my hand. So, that's, we're putting in a lot of time and effort. This is a very important period, because we have to finish out one year as planned for a new year. And so, it's a lot of overlap going on. We met this morning for a couple of hours, and then we had our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education monitor come and observe our meetings, and then we spent time afterwards. I missed lunch because of that, in dealing with our monthly report. So, lots of things occurring, things are happening very quickly, and obviously, you'll be hearing about things that affect people, and some of them won't be always happy. So, if you hear stuff, you know, please direct it to my office, and I will respond the best way I can. As far as the business part about it, this is the staffing update. We've had four hires, and one in food service, one para, and then two substitutes, a nurse and a district substitute, and one paraprofessional resignation, so that's the extent of the movement in that respect, okay? And that ends my report to the committee.
Thank you. All right, moving on to school committee actions. A, move that the Southbridge School Committee adopt a budget in the amount of $25,179,596 for the payment of salaries, expenses, and other obligations required for the operations of the Southbridge Public Schools for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. O'Leary? Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you, motion passes. B, vote to rescind the following policies, exhibits, and regulations. One, BDFAE1, submission and approval of the school improvement plan. Two, BDFAE2, conduct of school council business. Three, JFBB1, school choice. Four, ECG, not EKG, but ECG, community use of school facilities, and ECGR, community use of school facilities. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Mrs. McLaughlin makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan makes a second. Can we have some discussion, Mrs. Principay?
Yes, I'd like you to give, I'd like to give the reason for rescinding these policies. The first one, BDFAE1, submission and approval of the school improvement plan. E stands for exhibit, and the school committee felt that this is not an exhibit, it is an actual policy, and it was incorporated into BDFA, which is school council policy, and we are on our third and final reading tonight. The second one is Exhibit 2, and we felt that this was also not an exhibit, but more of a regulation. So, that is on tonight's agenda for the third and final reading also. JFBB-1 is school choice. Now, we had JFBB and JFBB-1. -1 is a policy that states that the Southbridge School District does not admit non-resident students under the inter-district school choice law. JFBB indicates that we do, and we do admit non-resident students. That's why we need to rescind the policy that states that we don't. EGC, community use of school facilities, is a duplicate policy. It is exactly the same as KF. Why it's in two places, we don't know, but the section E is about support services, like transportation and the pest management policy. So, the community use of school facilities, we feel, does not belong in this area, but rather in K, which is community relations. So, that is why we are rescinding both the policy and the regulation. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else, discussions, questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you, that motion passes. Next, we have two items, first readings of the school committee policy checklist, file BGBE, and the first reading of the school committee policy manual update, file BGBE2. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to replace these two readings, because they're exhibits, and add the two addendum items that was presented before you, which are the first reading of the community use of school facilities policy, file KF, and the first reading of the community use of school facilities regulation, file KFR. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. McLaughlin, and a seconded by Mrs. Donovan, and again, do we have some discussion on the removal?
Yes, they're exhibits, and these exhibits are more or less procedure, and not policies to be voted upon. One I mentioned was the update, which will be disseminated to the district leadership team, and the other one is just our own checklist, internal to the policy subcommittee, so we can keep track of the policies, the readings, the revisions, et cetera. So, they, it should not be on here to vote, but what was left off was the community use of school facilities that we revised, and the regulation. That should have been on instead of these. That's the only reason.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, unfinished business. We have the third reading of the school council's policy, file BDFA. We have the third reading of the school improvement plan policy, file BDFAA, and the third reading of the school council regulation policy, file BDFAR. Now, these are the third readings, and these will be accepted tonight with the vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to back up, I don't think you saw my hand. Do we need to have a motion, just going back one step, or we're doing the first readings for KF and KFR, do we need to have a motion to waive the readings? Or, I mean, I think our motion was just to replace the exhibits with these new policies, but do we have to do something to actually waive the reading of them?
We do, I don't think we got there yet.
That'll be under new business.
I think, we're on unfinished business.
So, we'll add that as the Agenda Item under new business. Will we get there? Okay, I apologize for the confusion.
It's okay. Any other discussion?
Do we need to make a motion to waive the third reading?
When we get down to new business.
Oh, waive the third reading?
Oh, I thought we were on unfinished business.
We are. Sorry.
So, we don't have to waive the third reading, because it's the final, it's the final acceptance. So, even though it's a third reading, it's the final acceptance of it.
So, what will our vote, when we vote, we're voting to accept them? As they are?
Yes, as the policy as they are.
Okay.
Madam Chair, you know, that's something that we should probably change, and we should probably change the way this is written on our agendas, because there are two readings, and the third reading, it's not really a reading, because we're adopting this policy. So, I don't think we properly word it on the agenda.
Okay. So, it would be the adoption of those three policies, not the third reading. Okay?
I think we'll change that in the future.
Yes, we will. Any other discussion? We'll have a roll call then, please, Max.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business this evening? Faith?
Hi. I didn't have a chance to make a comment towards Ms. Donovan. When you were talking about electives, you mentioned adding new ones and all of that stuff, and I thought it was really interesting and amazing, because you're adding more to the curriculum, which we didn't kind of have right now. I wanted to make a comment towards kind of leveling some of the electives. I am taking anatomy right now, anatomy and physiology, and I also take virtual high school, and they leveled the classes, and we have honors classes, which are less coursework, I would say, than anatomy and physiology, so if you could look into the coursework of the teacher, and kind of pair up, pair up that with like the coursework, and kind of label it as an honors class, because it deserves to be an honors class. It's a really interesting and challenging class, so if you would look at all the electives and kind of do that to them, that would be great.
Well, that's very good. The other thing I forgot to mention, but with, along with each one of these proposed courses or electives, there'll be a syllabus, or many syllabi, if you will, that will explain what the course will actually entail, what level, what the workload will be, how it will be taught, who will teach it. All that will be disclosed and presented to the students, just perhaps maybe even the parents as well, so you'll know what you're getting into before you even start. Or you can look and say, oh, you know, I don't like so-and-so, I'm not taking that class, or, you know, this is not, I thought I really wanted to take this class, but now that I see the work that it's going to be, maybe this isn't for me. So, that's an excellent point, in that I think that as these courses, you know, become what they, you know, what we want them to be, that will necessarily fall into place. You know, your suggestion is very, very well taken, that's a very good point. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. A, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on May 7, 2013, Council Chambers, and here we'll make the motion to waive the agenda to add the first readings of community use of school facilities, and the first reading of the community use of school facilities regulations. Do I have a motion to waive?
So moved.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
I'm going to second that.
Second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Any discussion on the first reading? The waiving? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Is there any other new business for this evening? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to make one announcement. I wanted to let the public know that our fourth and fifth graders from West Street School and Charlton Street School will be performing the musical A Year with Frog and Toad, and that is going to take place next Thursday, May 2, at 7:00 p.m., as well as next Friday, May 3, at 7:00 p.m., and the following, or the next Saturday, May 4, at 2:00 p.m. The show will take place at the new Southbridge Middle High School, and all seats are $6. And I really encourage parents, and teachers, and community members to come support these kids. They had to audition, and I was there for some of the rehearsal yesterday, and it's extremely adorable, and the kids are working really, really hard, and we have Mrs. Brackett from Charlton Street School, who is directing this. She's been around a long time, and always does a fabulous job with these shows, and she's being helped with Mr. Heath, who's the music director at West Street, as well as Mr. Rubenacker, who's the music director over at Charlton Street School. So, I am in charge of advertising, and there'll be flyers coming out, check cable access, check school website, check the Southbridge Evening News. We've been working hard to really get the word out to support these kids. So, again, the show will be next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Principay?
I'm sorry, I should have spoken up earlier. We waived the reading of the community use of school facilities and its regulation, but I didn't speak to it at all, and I just wanted to say, actually, they're very minor changes, some grammatical changes, and some more simplified language. One of the things we did for the community use of school facilities, that's broken up into two, it's eligibility, what the school is eligible, what people can use our school for, and it's public school activities, parent, teachers, et cetera. And then, we have a priority given for use of our facilities. Number one is the official school or town activities. Number two is school-related activities, three nonprofit groups, and the fourth priority is for-profit entities. As far as the regulation goes, that was more grammatical changes, and in what, some areas used to be business manager, now we say director of finance and operations, and we do say, for consistency, school district business office has to, the request has to be in at least four weeks prior to the date of use. And that's it. Thank you. Oh, no, one more thing. Anybody who wants to read these policies, Lauren keeps the bulletin board, I mention this at every meeting, up to date, 25 Cole Ave, it's the second bulletin board on the left, with all of our policies, the revisions, and what stage of the readings we're in. Thank you, Lauren, for that.
Thank you. Anyone else for new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14, executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel, or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 21A, Part 3. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Principay made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Donovan. Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you, and we'll come back to open session for German-only. Thank you. Thank you.